That would make sense as to why they're not moving here.
Correct.
Okay. Not really, but it's not surprising that the Office for the State of Control did not do this to respect the year. That's not a common phenomenon these days.
While we're waiting for the technical difficulties to be resolved, all to prepare to be going together in a presentation of voice, followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive our own sinners against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It is seven oh three. Shall we see the council meeting is called to order? Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See it, please. By the record, we had some technical difficulties, so we will just be about three minutes later. So it's seven oh three, and we'll have, and we'll call Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
I would now text and hand in a motion to dispense with reading of the Journal from August the second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and second by Mr. Gates, to dispense with reading of the Journal from August second, two thousand and twenty-one, discussion. Vote for all, please.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Barton?
Yay.
That motion passes. Now, some of the time for public comment. Anyone has a comment they'd like to direct to the City Council this evening? They'd like you to come to the podium, state your name, address, and make comments. Harry Dunn, we'll move forward then to reports from standing as special committees. Finance and personnel committee events. Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you very much. The committee met last Thursday afternoon at two thirty, and marched our way through the packet provided by the Finance Department. My colleagues will look at the very last page of that. This is the detail on city income tax collections. We have year-to-date up at the top, and as of the end of July, the city had collected two point eight plus million dollars in city income tax revenue. That's thirteen percent over two thousand and twenty, and twelve, a little over twelve percent over the three-year average. So needless to say, it's very good. If we look down at the bottom, we can see that for the month of July, the collection was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. If you looked across the sea, the previous year was five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Remember that last year, the income tax deadline was in July, not in April. So, you know, that's extraordinary. The Finance Director did say, looking at these monthly totals, he thinks that we are evening out for the year as far as monthly receipts and income tax. With that, we'll go to the second page, and at the bottom, we can see the detail for income tax, the, from individuals, from businesses, and from withholding. Individuals had paid seven hundred and ten thousand dollars this year compared to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. Businesses, it was three hundred and sixty-nine thousand compared to two hundred and twenty-one thousand, and withholding, which is really the bread and butter, so to speak, of income tax. And of course, that's, those receipts are based on two thousand and twenty-one income, whereas the other two are based on two thousand and twenty income that are collected a year later. One point seven million dollars, it was one point six a year ago. Looking down at the total, two point eight million dollars. That is thirteen percent over last year, and twelve percent over the three-year average. So again, income tax revenues are just exceeding everyone's expectations. Let's look at the front page and look at the various funds, some highlights and things. If we look at the general fund, we can see that the cash was one point six million dollars in coverages, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, leaving free and clear a little over a million and a quarter dollars. So a good, healthy balance there in the general fund. The year-to-date in the cash is up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, just again, extraordinary numbers for income tax, or, excuse me, the general fund. We did get second half collections for real estate in July, so that helps the general fund, and in particular, jump down, helps the health and the park funds. You can see that free and clear in the health fund, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Contrast that to free and clear in the park, fifteen hundred dollars. But you can see there's a rather large reserve for enclosures, a hundred and one thousand dollars of that is for engineering for Edge with the downtown enhancement. So that's some explanation there for that. There will also be, as I understand it, because private monies have been donated to help with the Black Fork Commons Plaza, those private dollars will be coming into the park fund to pay for the park's share of that work. So we should be seeing some good additional revenue there in the, in the park. Go down to Fund Two Eighty-Three, the local coronavirus relief fund. We have twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars in cash, we have fifteen thousand free and clear. Mayor, you have recorded some investigations that you're doing into the purchase of a new CAD and working with some other agencies. So that is, those monies have to be spent in their entirety by the end of the year, or I'm sure they get sent back to the Treasury Department. The next line, that's a new fund, the local fiscal recovery fund. We have received our first half of American Rescue Plan monies, four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Nothing's been appropriated yet, so that's something that the council will need yet to do, but the monies have been received and deposited in a fund that we created about two months ago. We'll look at the utilities. Got some good news with the sewer fund. You know, it's been, it's been struggling. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars cash, free and clear, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So that number is up appreciably over prior months. We go down a few lines, we can see the water fund is doing well. Electric fund, of course, it is down, but it is down because we have intentionally done some rate reduction to reduce that. So we still, even, even with our efforts, we still have a four million dollar balance in the electric fund. The other fund that we've been talking about in Finance Committee is the hospitalization fund, and about the potential of waiving a month's contribution to that. The way that works is the different funds that have employees who get health insurance contribute each month to the hospitalization fund, and then the hospitalization bill is paid. It is in a very good situation as of the end of July, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So again, we've talked, as we did a few years ago, we were able to, in that case, even waive a year, a month and a half. They don't like to do partial months, I understand. But my colleague, Mr. Martin, had a good suggestion, is to wait until the first of the year and see what the balance is at the end of the year, and then decide if we want to waive a, waive a month's contributions to that fund. There's been some initial contact between the, with the Finance Department on what the hospitalization rates are going to be this year. So it would, you know, we would have two pieces of information come the first year. We would know what the monthly, what the rates are for hospitalization, and we would also know the beginning balance of the first of the year, so we can make a much, much wiser decision about waiving a month. I hope the situation is, we can still consider that the end of the month, or the beginning of the year, but until we know what those rates are going to be, it would be premature to, to jump ahead and then, then put ourselves into a rocky situation. Continuing to the second page, if you look at the column labeled the two thousand and twenty-one, for the total budget, revenues exceed expenditures by nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and three thousand dollars. The general fund, revenues exceed expenditures by a quarter million dollars. We look down at the income tax revenues, right in the middle, the transfers. We transferred one point six seven million dollars into the general fund. Last year, it was one point four seven, so you can see an additional two hundred thousand dollars is going into the general fund. Wages from line one oh one, it's up seven, seven point seven percent. As the Finance Director mentioned, we've had a rash of retirees this year, so that's, we'll derive that. I think that's it for that page. Looking over at the next page, the comparison utilities, wastewater, although it's, it's doing better, you know, the, for the year, expenditures are exceeding revenues by twenty-six thousand dollars so far this year. So, you know, what, having one good month doesn't mean we can take our eyes off it, and we all know that. So, you know, we're happy for the good months, and we'll deal with the, with the rest as they come. The next page is the cash investment reconciliation statement. At the top are the investments, then the checking accounts, and then the totals at the bottom. The total in the city treasury as of the thirty-first of July, fifteen million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and three cents. Thin little page there about sort of rash fund, it's doing well. That takes care of the financial statement as far as the city audit. The Finance Director reported, they're still looking at the IT and the portion of that report, and the portion of the report dealing with municipal court. I think it's generally around September is when we get those emails, first rash of emails from the auditor about the audit report. So after Labor Day, we should expect to see that. As far as our, looking at our insurance coverage, the Finance Director signed the agreement with the company and sent information to it. He expects a reply from them in the next week or so, and basically, they will advise us as to what we need and what we don't need as far as insurance. And then with that, we can start to draw specs and bid the, bid the project out. As far as investments, there's been a, how do they call them, a vendor because he's the person selling services, but looking at other options other than what we have with PNC, and that's not negative about PNC, you know, they sell the products they have. There may be other products, knowing, of course, that we are, that all governmental units are very, very limited in what we can invest public value. Mayor, as far as personnel report, you said as of this coming Saturday, which would have been yesterday, we'll be down one firefighter, paramedic. Bob Hildebrand has resigned and has taken a position in the Columbus suburb of Whitehall. In the police department, Captain Dave Mack is retiring with an effective date as of the eleventh of September, and he has accepted a full-time teaching position at Tri Rivers Career Center in Maryland. Mayor, you reported that you and the chief plan to interview two candidates in the near future for openings in the police department. Plans are to begin our negotiations with bargain units as soon as we can coordinate calendars. The timeframe for that is late summer and early fall. We talked briefly about the workforce development grant application with the Health Department. You mentioned that there was, the State Health Department was looking for health departments that intended to apply, and we drew a distinction, I think it's more than a distinction without a difference, between applying for a grant and telling the funder that we intend to apply for the grant. So there was that issue about council authorization that came up between meetings, and, you know, we weren't able to do that. But, you know, if indeed the city intends to apply for that grant, I expect that the Health Department will be bringing us an application for council to approve. So, Mayor, that is a report from Finance and Personnel. As always, if my colleague has anything he wishes to add, please do. Or if the Finance Director, he's done pretty well, sir. Okay, and if you have any tough questions, we'll let the Finance Director answer those. So anyways, Mayor, that is my report. With that, I move the combined financial statement as a cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated thirty-first of July, two thousand and nineteen, we received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion of Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Barton?
Yay.
That motion passes, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from Mr. Gates in regard to this report? Here we go, we'll move forward then to the utility and the Streets Committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Streets Committee met on August twelfth. We had probably our longest meeting ever, but this is probably my shortest report ever, so go figure on that. The reason it was so long was we had a very thorough meeting with Medis Energy Solutions. Mr. Pat Fraser, Mark Herman, and Justin Siemens met with us virtually, presented their findings of the battery energy story, storage system, best study. Everyone should have received this study, the PowerPoint in their emails. We have not let Mr. Ensmann know. It's, it's very thorough, I'm not going to go into a lot of it, I'm just going to skip to kind of the nitty-gritty, the brass tacks, if you will. The conclusion that they came with was that they did recommend we go forward with battery storage, but it's not as simple as that. Basically, to stand alone, battery storage is very difficult to do outside of the scope of a solar project, and the reason being is the taxes goes away. So a lot of the providers and suppliers won't even kind of look at that. It also came in at a much higher cost than we were anticipating. Because of the higher cost, the return on investment wasn't nearly as much of a slam dunk as we initially thought. So we're going to be definitely looking at this with our energy partners, potential expanding the solar field, kind of change the dynamics, et cetera. But at this time, that's, that's where we're at with it. We have recommendation to go forward, but because of the costs of the battery system, the ROI isn't there for us to say, yes, we're definitely going to do this, back to the drawing board, so to speak. And for those that are interested, the amount that that came in, it was about one point two million for that level of battery coverage, which we could easily do with a couple of generators or some other things. So again, not the slam dunk that we thought it was, but it's still here. Do you have any questions on that? Well, entertain those. Because of the length of time that presentation took, the next thing we talked about was the, the water and wastewater infrastructure grant program. The State of Ohio is offering funds through a grant program for water and wastewater infrastructure improvements. Funds are available. The Ohio Department of Development, Ohio EKA, are administering the program. There is two over, roughly around two hundred and fifty million has been appropriated for the grant program. There's two types of project submissions, funds for design and funds for construction. There is a tight timeline to submit projects. The projects need to be submitted to the county engineer's office by nine AM Tuesday, August seventeenth. I wish those could keep track of home. Oh. So that's why on our agenda, we have a committee of the whole kind of discuss this. And it really comes down to, our projects are eligible, but it comes down to matching funds really helps with the scoring criteria, so it's a matter of how we want to match. And the issue there is that our water capital improvement funds are budgeted very tight, so there's no, nothing able to come out of there. However, ARPA funds are available, so we're going to discuss that a little bit more. The two projects that we're looking to do submissions on is water line replacement on Walnut Street area. The preliminary engineer's estimate for that project is one point three million, and then also water line replacement on West Park Drive. Preliminary engineer's estimate for that is one point, roughly one point two. And we'll discuss a little further, I'm sure, as we move along. That, Mayor, that's our report.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Martin in regard to this report? As you mentioned, that will probably take a lot more in the committee of the whole if you choose to go into that format. Are there any no comments or questions? We'll move forward to the Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Safety Committee met on August fourth. Chief Thompson reported that MTD donated a battery-powered circular rescue saw to the, to the fire department, which is, you know, a really nice extra tool, you know, for, for, for firefighters. And he wanted to thank MTD for that donation. They had two new firefighters that were training at the time of this meeting, which is good news, and of course, the benefit was Mr. Gates. We had a resignation, sorry, was turned in, so the hiring process starts all over again. So, health news, she's working on five nuisances currently. You know, I think the last report I gave, there were eleven, so those kind of rubbed me out, but she's certainly taking care of some of those. There's also a survey sent out from the Health Department in our, in our utility bills asking what the census law about the cleanup days, and she said most of the comments that they had so far were positive, so that was, that was nice. COVID cases were on an uptick at that time, and I, I won't give the numbers, I assume that maybe the mayor will have those numbers in his report, and I'll get the emails, so just let him take care of that if he chooses. Police Department, Operation Clear Tracks is going to take place on September twenty-first from two to four PM. Be focusing on rare crossings, look for violations, people crossing the bound barriers and stuff like that, so they'll be, they'll be kind of holding in on those areas. Police Department had two volunteer fire, volunteer peace officers, so then you all have to get our volunteer peace officer dependent fund going, which we didn't have to have because we didn't have any at that time. And last, but maybe should have been at the top of my report, the radios, communication in the police department is becoming an issue, has been an issue. So, you know, we're going to, I'm going to start getting a little bit louder about that situation, because, you know, that, not only does it affect our police department, but, you know, we can't, we don't have big communication with the fire department, you know, our safety services at some point could be harmed because of that situation. I think at some point, the state's going to mandate the park system, so, you know, it just seems, it just seems like that's, the state's going to have to deal with that, and I think the sooner the better. You know, I know everything comes down to money, but we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to start looking under rocks or whatever we've got to do to try to, try to get that, get that going, because like I said, you know, that's, the situation with radio is dangerous, I'm explaining some of it. So, with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Roberts, are there any comments or questions from Mr. Roberts in regard to this report? Here we go, move forward to reports of city officials. In deference to the potential committee of the whole, you know, keep my report very, very brief. As Mr. Roberts mentioned, last Friday, we're doing weekly reports of COVID-nineteen activity, and we reported over that seven-day period, twenty-two new cases, and also twenty-two recovered cases, and we had nineteen active cases within the city that we usually report zero, painful, zero hospitalizations, zero deaths. So that's the activity we're doing again, weekly reports. And expecting in those weekly reports, those cumulative numbers will be higher, so we're advising everyone to watch your peace of views and maintain good protocols. The disposition moved on to its next step, there'll be another, another public hearing coming up, is that September? I don't know what it is, but the engineer, county engineer is preparing some final figures on that. And other than typical mayoral duties, I really don't have anything else to report here this evening. Are there any questions for me or any comments in regard to my brief reports? Harry Dunn, we'll move forward then to Finance Director, Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. Actually, Mr. Gates did a vigorous job of covering most of the things I've been, been working on. We've had a couple of folks on vacation in my office that's just sort of been doing more routine stuff and covering for each other. I did get ahold of a few of my colleagues in other cities regarding the whole investment situation, and I think the general consensus is, you know, at this point, it doesn't really matter who you're with, you're not going to get much, so I'll probably table that for the future. But other than that, I really don't have anything new to present.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to this report? Here we go, we'll move forward to Mr. Easter, Law.
Thank you, Mayor. Routine business in my office, nothing new to report.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Easter? Here we go, move forward then to Mr. Joe Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. If anyone is at City Hall today, you'll see our open contractor has set up a stadium there in our parking lot scheduled to start down on Thursday. Of course, weather permitting, we'll see. Our paving contractor is ready to start the Tuesday of Labor Day week. Of course, weather permitting, and how much it rains between now and then, so we'll have that on my ears. So sure everyone saw that our census data did come out, we lost thirty-five people in the city of Shelby. As you'll remember, ten years ago, we had to look at the population of each ward. As you'll remember, 10 years ago, we had to look at the population of each ward and see if there was a disparity amongst each ward. So I will get that data from regional planning and present that to you guys, and hopefully it hasn't changed enough to get to go through that process again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I noted that the 2019 estimate for our population was just barely over 90,000. I've never accepted those estimates from the Census Bureau. Obviously, they missed the mark a lot. You know, I'm glad it was but, you know, a 35-person drop, you know, it was four tenths of a percent, that's negligible. So, but that's my advice, is ignore those estimates that come from the Census Bureau. Look at, you know, the actual numbers every 10 years.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, now we'll move forward to new business. First item under new business is a committee of the whole to discuss the water and wastewater infrastructure grant program. Mr. Martin.
Mayor, I move that we go into a committee of the whole to discuss water and wastewater infrastructure grant program.
Second. I have a motion on Mr. Martin, a second on Mr. Roberts to, which would have committed the whole need to discuss the water and wastewater infrastructure grant program discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Block, what?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
That motion passes, 734, committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does council have any initial comments? Okay. It's not Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Councilman Martin, this was discussed at the utilities meeting last Thursday. Across the bullet point notes from a webinar that Ohio Department of Development conducted on Friday afternoon from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So I'll read through the bullet points here, but this does update the water and wastewater infrastructure grant program. Program overview and launch on July 30th. Mr. Geis, myself, and some others in the city receive details from the county engineer on August 9th. Funding source for the program is out of the state appropriations of the American Rescue Plan Act. Funds available is $250 million. Max funds per project, $5 million for construction, $250,000 for design. Project starts to be submitted to the county engineer by 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, August 17th, which could be tomorrow morning. Submission is to the county engineer can be made by the mayor or his or her designated ID. I believe Mr. Geis has things ready to be sent upon approval. The county engineer can submit up to 10 projects for their representative political subdivisions within the county. 10-fold that the county engineer could submit for the subdivisions within the county. County engineer prioritizes the projects worth submission. Submissions can be made at a later date by the political subdivision, so even though all cited 10, at a later date, if you come up with a project, we can submit that at a later date. But as of now, the projects are submitted to the county engineer. County engineer prioritizes the 10, then we'll send those over to the state.
Excuse me, the chairman? Yes. What are the criteria for the county engineer prioritizes projects?
I had a talk with the county engineer, and there's no guidelines for him to do that and so forth, but some of our discussions was he would like to bring in the engineering representatives from all municipalities and give input and help out, because he is, obviously, he's got to have this done by the 21st, so he really doesn't have time to be messing, you know, I wouldn't say messing with, but so there will be input from every subdivision there.
Award notifications will come 45 days from the submission date. Application process, we have created an Ohio ID conference that we didn't have. Political subdivision should provide a matching fund, and that's kind of what the committee of the whole is kind of discussing here. No matching funds. The political subdivision should be a disadvantaged community and provide reason why the funds are not available. Matching funds need to be documented by the community, by the mayor, the finance director, or by council, by resolution. Any of those three would be sufficient. Matching funds are part of the scoring sheet. I believe I spent it on the scoring sheet and all the other information, and all the council should then attest, make them to their confluence genuinely in the past. You should have access to review. Community ARPA funds can be used as matching funds for the submitted project and as recommended if possible. Other funding streams can be used to support the project as well. Project has a shelf life of December 31st, 2024. Applications will be received until the funds are depleted. First come, first served basis. Legislation is not needed to apply, but that's up to each community to decide upon that. Projects are ranked and approved by a scoring sheet of 100 points, and if project is awarded funds directed, deposited to the community, then paid to the contract. So those are some of the points from the two-hour-long webinar from Friday. We do have two projects that we quickly put together, as Mr. Martin had discussed, the utilities, two projects that the administration had been looking at and knowing that we have concerns of two areas of town that meet the criteria for the infrastructure criteria. Those two water lines projects will be in the West Park Drive area, and the other one will be off of the South Street Summit, West Tucker, and the rural, West Earl extension area. So those two particular areas, as Mr. Martin had mentioned, pool, they come in right around $2.5 million. So they're very extensive projects. We know that they're where they're needed. We've had discussions in the past with the fire department. The fire department has concerns with fire suppression in that area, those particular areas. So we know these are areas that are of concern. That's why we had chosen these two particular areas for submitting those projects, so. I had a brief discussion with Mr. Geis this morning, knowing that I found out that a total of 10 projects can be submitted from the county engineers almost to the state. We had just a brief discussion on this, whether we should combine the project to do a one project instead of submitting over to two. I think Mr. Geis said, I don't get in a conversation with the engineer on that, but there is some thought on our end. Primarily, what we need to know is if we should submit in the application if there will be matching funds available, or should we amend the letters to the state why we cannot submit additional funds.
Mr. Geis, did you have anything?
Yeah, on the application, the part of it is, was this project ranked by your county engineer, and you put on there, wasn't over there? We don't have that information yet. And also, it says on there, are there matching funds coming? If not, then it gives you a box to view the explanation online on. So, but when we went through that webinar Friday, it seemed very, very important, very beneficial if we did have some matching funds towards that, as always, you know, we have, so.
And you had indicated in our committee meeting, you had spoke to the finance director about the matching funds coming from the ARPA and what he was comfortable with providing.
Yes, I did have a conversation with Mr. Crum last week. We had mentioned the programs, the two different projects that we're looking at, the amount of funds that we would be seeking, and the amount of ARPA funds that would be coming to the city coffers. And in our conversation, I would speak to the finance director, but we did speak $100,000 per project, so we had a total of $200,000. So he can think for matching.
Yeah, as we were, you know, it's sort of a, well, how much do you think it'll take to do that? So we kind of threw around $100,000. You know, I do kind of like the idea of using the ARPA funds for this. One, it's, you know, we're essentially 10 times the money for that investment. And two, it does, you know, it's a definite, okay, you can use this money for that, and, you know, versus our water and sewer improvement funds are not terrible, but, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of projects with them already right now. So this could create up some funds in those areas for this as well. So I personally don't have any issue using some ARPA funds for this. You know, I, and unfortunately, my next webinar on what we can spend this money on is until Wednesday. So, you know, this is a good yes, you can definitely use it. I have no complaints with this, throwing some funds for this project. Mr. Gates?
You know, I'm glad to hear about this project over off Walnut Street, because I know it's been a problem, particularly with the concerns of the fire department. The flow is just, pressure is just not there. You know, when a firefighter tells me if there's a fire on South Street, they're not, they won't look to a hydrant on South Street because there's no pressure there. They'll go down to Walnut Street and run the hoses up, and that's, that's a real issue. So I'm glad to hear this, and we can take care of those leaks and the dead ends and loop them. You know, the 150-some-page preliminary rule we got about ARPA, and they were very clear that the water and wastewater improvements pretty much had a green light. So, you know, I don't have a problem using the ARPA funds. I think that, I think we ought to go 10% ARPA. You know, rather, you know, because $100,000 if it wasn't 7% or something like that. You know, so many of the grants that we apply for, you know, a lot of them are 90/10 anyways. So I think that we ought to just, you know, add a few more dollars and go to 10% ARPA and, you know, get in line and see what we get from the state. As it always is, you know, the more you can leverage locally, the happier it makes the state, makes them be able to spread their dollars around more. So, but I think 10% is a good figure.
So I think it's important to note, too, if we apply for a construction grant, we can get in using that money for the engineering on that. So that is going to come out of our own line to do the engineering on that, which is normally 10% of the project, so, you know, there's another $100,000. So that's for each one, so.
So we'd essentially be looking at a $500,000 line of investment of the 2.5 million.
I don't know if we could use ARPA funds, too, to pay for the engineering. Maybe that's, you know, something to come out, but I know, we just heard Councilman Roberts talk about mark spray goes for police are very important, too. So I think we would be able to get $700,000, and I don't know how much a mark spray system is, but.
What are the total ARPA funds, is it, what's this about, is this, is this half?
947.
So I'm certain we got right now the full.
I think, Jerry mentioned marks, that's about $100,000. I think he's saying yes, you know. Mr. Mayor, what?
Well, let me, let me tell you, with amendment I've got written for this opioid thing is my, just to let you know, my, and I had asked the mayor if he had, was able to, you know, this morning, if he knew what this opioid settlement might be. I don't know if you're able to find any.
When it comes up, I will give you the information I have, but not any specific amount, but I'll, during that discussion, I'll just know what I found.
Well, the amendment I'll have to this last resolution is that any proceeds from city proposed settlement would be deposited in the police equipment fund. So, you know, there could be some money for the radios and.
Well, I think this is germane to our whole conversation. So I did have, put in a phone call to the other of state, and they denied it's going back. I called the city, well, they were in this, and she denies it back, but I did find an article from, I think it's Lake Township, and they recently authorized to get into this, into this settlement. And according to this information, under the one plan, it's what it's called, the one plan, some of the money would be distributed locally with 55% going to a foundation created to disperse the money and fund programs that benefit Ohioans affected by opioids and/or prevent addiction, so that's 55% of whatever we might get. 30% is earmarked for community recovery programs at the local level. So 55%, 30%, and 15% going to the state of Ohio. So with those divisions, it looks like it's a, it looks like those, that's the way that that, that's the way they're going to be distributed. 55 to a foundation to disperse money, to fund programs, 30% earmarked for community recovery programs at the local level, and 15% going to state. So I have planned exactly your thought process, and you and I think a lot alike, but I'm not so sure with these designations, if that would be possible from what I'm reading. So, so that is germane to our conversation, that's what I'm bringing up now. I was not aware of those distributions, how that was to be distributed. Whatever that is, if we get.
Dollar 98.
Yeah, if we get $500, $50,000, those will be 55, 30, 15. That's what they have to, apparently, are earmarked to go. And I was not aware of that until this article.
So I guess the question importance is okay for going with that, the 10% number.
How far is it? Would you be able to figure out what the difference is between the $100,000 and the 10%?
So if, oh, well, if we've got 2.5 million, we'd be putting in 250,000, right?
Instead, so 50,000 more.
Yeah. Plus the engineer.
I would believe that 502 funds would be able to support some of the engineers as well. It would be a legal score of financial relief. Two of the funds, especially next year, we should be able to pledge a settlement. I can't say we're sure enough, if the project's going forward, but I believe there will be some additional funds for that water capital improvement that we're going to help support the project.
Any other discussion? So if we are planning on doing 250,000 for this, should we amend my ordinance appropriations and appropriate that line this evening? Mr. Gates?
I think, to get us out of that kind of trouble. I think, I think this evening, the council is offering guidance to the administration, and whatever legislation is needed can come back at the next meeting.
Any further?
Yeah, because my, my plan was, as to the September 7th meeting, have a resolution to authorize to apply for these funds, so we can get that to the state. We don't, can't do it tonight because we don't know what our county ranking is for one, and, you know, this is more helpful information on the matching funds, so. And so there will be a cert at that point.
Any further discussion?
We'll committee of the whole turn.
Do you second in that? We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to come out of the committee of the whole. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Block?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
The council comes out of the committee of the whole meeting at 7:51. We're back to our agenda, our new business. Any other new business that you brought before council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward to unfinished business. Future use of Main Street Fire Station. We'll be on your calendars, September the 7th, our first meeting in September at 6:00. We'll be meeting right here as a committee of the whole. We'll be meeting right here as a committee of the whole with the Historic Preservation Commission as our guests uh, to discuss the, uh, Fire Station, future use and so forth, and all the dynamics of that at that, uh, especially at six o'clock. All right. Moving forward to, uh, Broadway Street property of Mr. Schumacher. Uh, I think, Mr. Ensign, do you have some news on that today? Mayor?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm briefly noticing again, uh, this does pertain to a sewer backup issue during heavy rain events there at, uh, residency on Broadway. Uh, discussing, discussing with the property owner on Tuesday, August third. Uh, it is issues during heavy rain events and they do have some sewer backup, uh, with the full rains. Uh, he has issues over the past years. Uh, there was a backflow preventer installed on the sewer ladder of the project twenty years ago. He does have easy access to the backflow preventer if it's in, it's in his basement, but he has unchecked it, uh, recently. So, he is meant to look into that. Discussing with the issue with the service partner superintendent and city engineer on Wednesday, August fourth. Uh, they did have any sewer main, uh, infrastructure issues in that particular area probably. There are some in other, in other areas, not this particular area. Uh, they did question the, uh, if there was a backflow preventer installed in that part of the facility. There was. Uh, sewer crews inspected the sewer main after a heavy rain event on Wednesday, August eleventh. Uh, this is a ten inch main, which typical sewer, sewers are eight inch main. This, this particular main, I think it was a ten inch main. The sewer is running half full and flowing freely. Made contact with the property owner that afternoon, informed him of the findings from the inspection. Uh, he was unsure if it flooded in the basement or not, gave that up. And when I, uh, when I, when I called him that evening, that, that late afternoon, discussed the backflow preventer with McGinn and this mechanical device. Uh, that probably need to be inspected for proper, proper operation. Uh, and it was a good possibility it was stuck open. Uh, he was going to look into it. Uh, the crews met with the property owner this afternoon, I believe it would be at noon here today, just to discuss backups. Uh, sewer main was inspected upstream and downstream, but the property in the storm flooded without instructions. And the property owner discussed they were, they're going to look into the backflow preventer again. So, uh, our conclusion on this would be that, that during heavy rain events, uh, with the amount of ionized enters into our sanitary sewer system, the sewer becomes inundated. If the backflow preventer is stuck open, it could be, it's a backup.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'm very proud of you. Any, uh, for the comments?
Uh, the clerk can remove that from the agenda.
All right.
The clerk can remove that from the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving forward to Turner Centennial Timeline. Mr. Gates?
Uh, there's nothing to report and this item can be removed from the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for taking us from that historical journey. Appreciate it.
Mayor, you're welcome.
McBride Park Baseball Field. Any, uh, news on that?
Favorite meeting schedule, so.
All right. Any other unfinished business? If not, we'll move forward then to legislation.
Ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Amending ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-one, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Now, motion to suspend passes?
Move the ordinance to be taken up and passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passes of ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, we've had a busy year with, uh, public works and, uh, we exceeded the amount originally appropriate for engineering. So, more monies are, are needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number forty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One Eight, or Local eighteen S, Unit A and Unit B, for the observance of the Juneteenth holiday for the two thousand twenty-one calendar year.
Move the resolution to be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passes of resolution forty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion.
Mr. Roberts.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Roberts seconded.
Oh, yeah, that's, I didn't know what that said. Wow, okay, Mr. Roberts seconded, all righty. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Resolution number forty-seven, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one. Authorizing the mayor as director of public safety to sign a memorandum of intent and understanding with the International Union of Firefighters Local Two Four Nine Two regarding Juneteenth.
Move the resolution to be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passes of resolution forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
Uh, just a quick question, just for my own clarification. What's the, um, difference between the MOU and the memorandum of intent and understanding? Is there a difference or is it just same wording, different effect, or same effect, different order?
This was drawn up, oh, Mr. Gates, have you answered that?
The, uh, the president of firefighters local, uh, this is what we presented, we have, so.
Okay, sir. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Resolution number forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with Richland Engineering Limited for Construction Inspection Services for the RIC SR thirty-nine dash three point three five Main Street Streets, Main Street Streetscape Project and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution to take up and pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passes of resolution forty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Uh, how is it the Richland Engineering was chosen for this?
Mr. Gates, we did the qualified base, full selection process that we got, many things that you go through. Um, we put out a, a notification for engineering firms to submit their qualifications and their intent to do so, or, and we ranked those and this firm was the highest.
Mr. Gates?
Sir, I'm curious what the other firms were.
Mr. Gates, you know, right, I'm running here. Um, I can't even remember the name of their firm. There was one that actually did work in Belleville and, uh, Lucas and very high rated. I mean, it was really close and I can't, do you remember the names?
There were Cleveland there, one was on Cleveland there.
There were four.
There were four, yeah.
So, it was lively competition for this work.
Good. They each brought, I think, different things to the table, but it seemed like the, the, the strength was here for our particular projects. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Resolution number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-one. Approving the specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the water meter purchase project within the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move the resolution to take up and pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the pass of resolution fifty, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
On, uh, page, uh, at the top it says D I V, uh, one dash two. Down, item number three, it says, uh, corporation state of blank, county of blank, asking unanimous consent that that be changed to county.
Oh, okay, on number three you're saying?
Yes.
How many pages is in there? We have, we have the, so on, uh, what's it, D I V one dash two?
Yes.
Uh, number three down there, where it should say county, we'll correct that to the word count, to the word county. Are there any objections that have changed? Hearing none, that would be changed to the county. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates?
On page, uh, D I V one dash six. It reads the bidder must indicate his qualifications. Bitter is a non-gender term. I ask unanimous consent to change the word his to its.
It's been moved by unanimous consent that the word on division one six, bidder must indicate its qualifications instead of his qualifications. Are there any objections?
All right.
Mr. Martin?
Probably should be their, not its.
Special raise.
Well, one bidder is going to be filling this out. And they will be a human. So, they should have, and it's one thing to go with non-gender pronouns. Let's not make them, you know, inanimate.
Except, Mayor, that the, the suggestion compounds the error. Bitter is singular, there is, uh, is a plural pronoun. We still have grammatical error.
I'm all right with the word its in this particular, uh, I don't involve any other word. Mr. Robb?
Mr. Martin raised an objection, so there cannot be unanimous consent.
There is no, do you, are you, are you objecting to the word its totally, or can you roll with it?
I, I'm objecting. My objection stands.
All right, well.
Care less about a ruling from the chair of this one.
Mayor, then I move that on said page, the word his be amended to its.
There are second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin that, uh, the word on division one six, that the word the bidder must indicate instead of his, to change the word to its. That is the motion to amend on division one six. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Uh, that motion to amend fails.
On page, uh, division one ten, down in the last paragraph. See the fourth line down, uh, said proposal is on is. Parenthesis there, close parenthesis par. Uh, I think the word is supposed to be part. Uh, also in the last line, uh, excuse me, the second to last line, where it says the city of Shelby, toward the end, all the statements made by him in this proposal are true. I ask unanimous consent to change is to its, par to part, and him to its.
Is to its, part to part. And what was done on, uh, Mr. Gates, I'm reading through here.
It's the line that begins city of Shelby, at the end of that line.
Oh, the next to last line.
Instead of made by him in this, it should be made by it.
That's unanimous consent?
Yes.
It's been moved by unanimous consent that on, let's see, one, two, three, line number four, that his, uh, said proposal is on, instead of is, the word its. And then the parenthesis there, par, should be changed to part. And then on the next to the last full line, that, uh, the statements, the last few words, there are statements made by it in this proposal are true by unanimous consent. Are there any objections?
Subjective.
That that cannot be approved by unanimous consent.
I move to make said corrections.
We have a second to that motion? There are no seconds, that motion will not move forward.
Mayor, page, uh, D I V one fourteen. Says the third line down, the city being quote, and Ferguson Water Works of the city of Columbus, Ohio, county of Franklin and state of Ohio, here and after called the party of the second part or the vendor. Who is Franklin Water Works?
Mr. Gates?
I believe this is, uh, we reused from the last time that we took this out for bids and that was the, uh, the, um, firm that supplied the alarm here. So, that you should change that out and just put the bidder and, um, this is the contract. So, when we give their bid, we're going to put their information in there. So, that was, uh, that should not be in there. Is it curio?
Will you make that correction?
Mayor, I move that the, uh, the language Ferguson Water Works of the city of Columbus, Ohio, county of Franklin and state of Ohio be replaced with a blank.
That's made by motion?
Yes, sir.
One, second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin that on the third line down on division one fourteen, um, that the, the wording Ferguson Water Works of the city of Columbus, Ohio, county of Franklin, the, and state of Ohio, uh, be stricken and replaced with a blank. Discussion. Just a blank line or blank? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
That motion passes. Any further dissenting? All right, we are ready for, and it's, and it's, and it's set at all. Ready for roll call vote then on resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the two thousand twenty-one Shelby Main Street Arch Project within the city of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution to be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the pass of resolution fifty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I note that, uh, on page one at the bottom, it talks about the covenant wage rates as determined by the state of Ohio. rates as determined by the state of Ohio. And also note on page five, the domestic steel requirement, that's, that's good. I believe that's all my dog ears, Mayor.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
I think, uh, the, uh, C I C should be amended for, we, uh, they went out, there was a group of, basically a Pat Ford group, but they really went out and raised one for this project and the cloud of education commended, which is, it's been fantastic.
We're here. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin.
There's one note that we did a certificate, uh, of this law, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one, approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Main Street Water Service Replacement Project within the city of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken on the pass? Second? We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passes of resolution fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, we look at the plans themselves, uh, the front page, over on the right side, it notes that Stephen Lifer was the director of finance, I, uh, move that, uh, Mr. Lifer's name be stricken and the name of Brian Crum be inserted.
That's unanimous consent?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm writing.
A motion.
A second motion, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts, that, uh, the, the name for director of finance, uh, Stephen Lifer be stricken and replaced with Brian Crum. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
That motion passes, thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, and the specs themselves, looking at the page, it's the first one in, related special conditions, item number ten refers to, uh, federal Davis Bacon wage rates, my question for, I suppose, for Mr. Gates, is this the, a Davis Bacon project or a state prevailing wage project?
Mr. Gates, this is a Davis Bacon, it's federal funds through the state, through the law.
But, uh, continuing there on page twenty, the dip line, about a quarter of the way down, we can see sign and seal, uh, this blank day of blank, twenty-twenty, I move that, uh, twenty-twenty be amended to twenty-twenty-one.
Second? We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts, uh, on page twenty, uh, on the line that begins with sign and seal, this blank day of blank, uh, replacing two thousand twenty with two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, on page twenty-two, uh, about a quarter of the way down, again, you see a line followed by twenty-twenty, and then about halfway down, sign and seal this blank day of blank, twenty-twenty, I move in both instances that twenty-twenty be replaced with twenty-twenty.
Second? On page twenty-two, uh, uh, just above the, the, uh, bold word Water Service Replacement Project, uh, the word twenty-twenty there, it's be amended to, make that twenty-twenty-one, and then, uh, on the line about one-third of the way, sign and seal this blank day of blank, two thousand twenty should be replaced with two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Mr. Gates.
On page, uh, fifty-six, again, we see a reference to Stephen Lifer explaining his director, I move the name Stephen Lifer be stricken and Brian Crum be inserted.
Second? There has been the move, the second, move by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts, that on page fifty-six, the name Stephen Lifer be stricken and replaced with Brian Crum. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes.
And on page, uh, fifty-nine, right in the middle of the page, again, we can see a, move the twenty-twenty be replaced by twenty-twenty-one.
Second? We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts, on page fifty-nine, that the date, uh, twenty-twenty-one be, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty, be stricken and replaced with twenty-twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Any further discussion? Ready to, so we look back to my main page here. Ready to roll call votes on resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Robb.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public safety to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreement and declaring emergency.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rule requiring the clerk of counsel to provide legislation to members of council three days prior to the meeting.
Second? We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to suspend the rule of the, or, how do you say it, Mr. Gates?
The rule requiring the clerk of counsel provide legislation to members three days prior to the meeting.
That is the rule we are moving to suspend. Are there any questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion to suspend passes.
Uh, I move the resolution be taken on the pass.
Second? We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passes of resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I kind of tipped my hand earlier about making amendment to this, but based with the information you had given, you know, we have no idea, uh, what, if any proceeds, quite honestly, are going to hit the city coppers, uh, if and when they do, then, uh, we expect the finance director to come to council with some guidance on this, uh, you know, this is a law enforcement matter, so it seemed to me that, uh, the police equipment fund is a good place for it, and quite honestly, I, you know, sharing. Mr. Roberts concerned about funding radios, you know, I thought, well, that would be a, you know, real, real good place to fund radios, uh, it was, it's a good thought, but we don't know.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin.
Is there a way to make the amendment, that Mr. Gates was going to make amendment, and put at the end, um, if allowable, um, so at least our intent is on the record of what we'd like to see happen, and if allowable, allowing proceedable?
Give me about, uh, a minute and a half.
Something to think about too, is if you get more than a hundred thousand, maybe up to a hundred thousand if allowable, in case you get a million bucks and gotta put it from the police department.
The chief is wanting one week of gratis.
Well, it's eight hundred and eight million to be divided across the state among all the political subdivisions.
Who approve? They don't file their own independent laws.
And, from what the article says, you'd be fighting for the scraps at that point, if that's the way it goes.
Mayor, I have an amendment to offer, uh, new section two, that council intends that any financial proceeds from the proposed settlement be deposited into the police equipment fund. And I'll give this to the clerk.
Second? So we have a, a motion, uh, by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to create a new section, uh, to create a new section two, is that correct, Mr. Gates?
Yes, and then number the, uh, reception.
Number three and two become three and three become four, part of that process, uh, that council intends, with all the verbiage there, to, uh, place these proceeds in the place equipment fund, and that verbiage will be given to the, for, of council for exact wording, but you understand the intent of the motion, if you're enough, okay? Discussion on that motion to amend by creating a section two, a new section two. Mr. Martin.
I'd like to thank Mr. Gates for his idea, I think that's a great idea, put that delays there, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to do so.
Hope, hopefully, it's more than a buck ninety-eight.
There you go. All right, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion to amend passes. Now back to the main motion for passage of resolution fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one passes. How comes the miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business to be up before council this evening? Mr. Gates.
Um, this, not real happy about this, but it was expected, and Mr. Dreulynchewski has announced his retirement at the effective end of the year, so, that is a good bunch of knowledge of leading us, and, uh, he's, uh, signed, he even let his, uh, license expire and so forth, he's put in his time and very well deserves retirement, but we're certainly going to miss him, so, our contract is with Bethany Broca, and that is also up to ten years, so we're in discussions with them, obviously, they would have another engineer on their firm, of course, depending with them, so, uh, we'll keep up on, um, form on what's going on with that, so. I think he's been doing it over fifty years.
And, and in further, there's something I have to say.
There's no, uh, so.
Mr. Martin, I think I saw your name.
I think you had a german comment to that, so.
I just, prior to making my motion adjourned, I was going to hope there were no other bombshells, so.
Mr. Martin.
Our thoughts and prayers go to the people of Afghanistan during this time, um, obviously twenty, a little over twenty years ago, um, we got involved in the country, and, uh, a lot of us who have, uh, served, uh, either served in Afghanistan, know people who had served multiple tours in Afghanistan, uh, but also by way of that, know, have a lot of connections, uh, with people within the country as well, and, uh, hearing from them, uh, elicit similar things, uh, response from me as when I would hear from people that I made friendships with and stuff when I was deployed to Iraq, so I can only imagine, um, so, prayers, uh, all the way around, and, uh, we still do have a lot of our men and women in, um, in our forces in harm's way, um, and, uh, so we pray for their safety as well.
Very true, thank you. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move council adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment, roll call please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Gates. Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Council adjourns at eight twenty-eight. Amen?